Honorable Howard Shipley residing, please remain standing.
This time I want to call the August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Hamlin County Legislative Body to order. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Chris Puttshaw to lead us in our prayer, please.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your son, Jesus. Praise be to you, Lord God. Thank you for the burdens you bear for us. Father God, we humbly come to you, asking you, Father, that you lead us, that you cover us with your mercy and your grace. God, we ask that your will be done. We look around our country, Father, and so many are hurting in surrounding countries that, you know, from virus to hurricanes to earthquakes. Father God, we just pray that your hand be on our nation, be on our state, and be on our county. We're so grateful for what we have here, and God, we just, we really ask your will to be done. It's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to ask Commissioner, uh, Jim Gons to please lead us in our pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Commissioners, everything is going to be off the board tonight. I'll need to ask your favor, those of you who make a second, if you would raise your hand so that our clerk could make sure who seconded the motion, we could take care of it from there. If you haven't already done so, please turn your minds up. And I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Jeff Baker?
Here.
Ali Norman?
Here.
Chris Puttshaw?
Here.
Thomas Stowey?
Here.
Randy DeBoer?
Here.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Tom?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Here.
Joe Huston? Wayne Neesmith?
Here.
Mike Reed?
Here.
Howard Shipley?
Here.
James Stapp?
Here.
Taylor Ward?
Here.
We do have a forum present, so we are open for business. We do not have any, uh, special recognitions or, uh, presentations at this time. So the chair is going to recognize Chairman Jim Stapp of the calendar rules. May it.
Thank you, Chairman. Item two A approval of the ten counter items, I put that in form of motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, and all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same way, the motion carries.
Item two B, motion to approve the written counter items with the deletion of item eight personnel committee.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let it be known by saying no. The motion is approved.
I'll have Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman Stapp. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thomas Stowey moves?
Second.
Okay, uh, Horner, second to the motion. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by saying no. The motion is approved. The next item of business is request from Mayor Britton for the confirmation of Edgar Bray and John Hofer to the planning committee for a four-year term through August two thousand and twenty-five. The chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Chris Puttshaw moves. Uh, Chairman DeBoer seconds the motion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by saying no. The motion is approved. We come to the item of public comment from the audience, and we do have two requests for, uh, five minutes. Linda Noah has requested to address the commission, uh, regarding, uh, a couple of items. So, uh, Ms. Noah, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you very much. My name is Linda Noah, twenty-three forty-three Joe Stevens Road. I had mentioned item six A, that's where you will be approving a resolution to appropriate or to, um, fund twenty-two million dollars for the schools for Lincoln Elementary. That, of course, is related to the item that I do want to discuss, which is seven B on the bond resolution, initial bond resolution. There's no problem with the twenty-two million for Lincoln, but you don't need and you don't have to include another twenty million, four hundred thousand in that resolution for the jail justice center. It's already seventy-five million. You haven't taken the, the second bids yet. You haven't done a shovel of dirt, and you're already getting ready to up it to ninety-five million dollars. I remember just a little over a year ago, Mr. Shipley, and it's still on the county website, you had this letter criticizing these people. Oh, you were responding to the criticism about the jail. And you said, oh, it's not seventy-six million. Ten of that is for West High. You were right about the ten roughly, but you were implying it was sixty-six million for the jail. Now, you have, every time it has come, and there are about nine or ten of you, you just, it doesn't matter, whatever. Add another ten million, add another twenty million. By the time it's through, we don't know what it will be. But I ask that you change your resolution. Leave it twenty-two million for the schools, an initial bond resolution. The whole purpose of this is simply to get it published in the paper and make sure you don't have the people with a petition for a referendum. That's all this is. The statement that, oh, it's just to publish it. Yes, it is just to publish it because that's step one. And then step two is what it says in the resolution. The Board of County Commissioners has determined that it is necessary and advisable to borrow funds and incur indebtedness. So, yeah, you publish it in the paper, and then when it's, you're ready to pull down the money, then you issue it. How about we stop and look? Get the facts. Look at another solution that would save thirty million dollars. You could pay fifteen or twenty miles of road for that. That's a whole lot more. Why would you choose a ninety-five million dollar solution when there's a thirty, or I mean a sixty or sixty-five million dollar solution? Nobody's answered that. Nobody's looked at it. Nobody has gotten the facts or figures to explain why the Taj Mahal, multi-story, unsafe, unstaffable jail is preferable to one-level pods with a tower in the middle that has a three-hundred-and-sixty view, three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view. You don't have that with this jail in the current configuration. Yeah, you put a something in the middle, but it can't see all, all the cells like you can. If you've been to Coffee County, I know Mr. Reed has been, and Mr. Neesmith, and several others. If you've been in that tower, you know the observation you have, and that's with minimal staffing. And that's the other thing you'd love to ignore is you get a staffing study a little over a year ago, and I've never heard another word about it. As soon as it went in the paper that you'd need seventy-two more employees, and it'd be two or three million extra every year, not just one year, but every year. And boy, did you shut up about that. That is part of your job. That is part of the jail. It's not just build a building. It's make sure you can staff it, make sure it's safe, make sure that it is designed so that you can monitor all the cells. Please separate it out and come back after you get your bids and check on the, how much you're going to need for the jail.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Ms. Neesmith here, now she requests her five minutes. I don't stay here, so at this time, uh, we would hear comments from anyone else regarding items that are on the agenda for a three-minute period of time.
Chairman, what we want to know about. Most of y'all know that first Monday, we set up a booth and given information to the people of this county about what y'all are doing with this jail. One of those ladies that come by there, goes straight to court with me. She's eighty-two years old. She told me she attends first Monday in the flea markets because it's the only way she can survive. She has to look for discount items. She's already making choices between her medicines, her utility bills. She doesn't air condition her house because she can't afford the increased cost of electric bill. This lady is already sacrificing. And what y'all are getting ready to do is increase her taxes, and that is just going to mean more of what she's going to have to do without. What you're doing is not going to cause it. It's going to intensify what is already going on for a lot of people out there. And y'all are not going to see those people that are really struggling. You all have called us lawyers because we said it was a seventy-five million dollar jail. Oh, no, no, you're a lawyer. We're giving it down from that. The lawyers that are going to say ninety-five million. And y'all are just pushing that dude without even seeing, I don't bid, not even seeing what can be cut down out of it. Mr. Doby sat right over at the tech school and told me that face-to-face that he thought anything worth sixty-five million dollars was too much. I've heard Mr. Reed make that same remark. Well, any of y'all stand up now and go, hey, let's put the brakes on this. Let's stop this. I know y'all heard Coffee County through up here, you're tired of it. I'm tired of hearing it. But it's just an example. It don't have to be exactly like theirs. But there are other options than going ahead with this ninety-five million dollar vast custody that you're going to strike the people of this county with. They are already sacrificing to pay what we currently have, and then you're going to put more on them. Where's your compassion and your mercy for those people out there that are struggling? Mr. Puttshaw, in this meeting with grace and mercy, well, show some of that grace and mercy to those people out there that are struggling to make it. Last thing I want to address. It has been, uh, floated around that Mrs. Lloyd comes in here and tells us what to say and what to do. We don't have a mayor that comes out and tells us how we're going to think and how we're going to feel and how we're going to vote. My own wife don't do that to me, and no one else sure isn't going to. What I can appear and tell you is what I'm thinking, what I feel. And if I am associated with Mrs. Lloyd, it is simply because I agree with her and the issues, not because I have anyone telling me what to say or do.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission regarding items on the agenda?
Bobby Wilmington, three-seventeen Stepford Field Street, Queensburg. Let me first just say I have never seen a body of officials like this worth of commissioners that are so determined to get what they want regardless of the cost. The jail was going to be seventy-five million. You got bids, found out it's more. Now you want to borrow, uh, forty-two more million dollars. I understand the, uh, twenty million for the school, but I have to wonder, if it wasn't for you guys wanting more money for your jail, would you even consider borrowing the money to build this school? I find it doubtful. And once you get this extra money, how long is it going to be before we're back up here again with you guys wanting to borrow more money because you can't staff the jail? You can't pay for the maintenance on it? And to tell you the truth, when you get the other, uh, twenty million, four hundred thousand, I don't think that's going to pay for what y'all want. And I've never seen anybody as disagreeable that you won't even entertain another idea. I just, I don't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Peggy Howell. Uh, Howell Road, Moorestown. I did not know. I was at another meeting and just thought I'd pop in, and I did not realize that these two things were going to be linked together. Hamlin County taxpayers want to know who is funding education. Hamlin County taxpayers will vote, uh, as to who is raising taxes and who we need to keep in office. I very much did not realize, but if we put these two together, that means all those who vote for the bill in looking at it as an education thing are also voting for the added money. We have a federal government that is throwing around millions and billions and trillions, and it does look a little alarming when twenty million is, uh, put up again for a jail that, uh, is doing, the one you're proposing, uh, at seventy-five is enough. My brother hired a worker who is helping redo a house for him, and he, uh, in learning about the guy, he said, yeah, I'm in, I'm in jail. And he said, well, you're out here working. And he said, uh-uh. He showed him his ankle bracelet. And he said, I have only five places I can go, uh, but I will be put in jail if I avoid that. If, he has a job, he has three meals a day at, at his choosing, he has a home to go to. I, I do not understand adding extra, uh, when, if you build it, they will come. And, and we certainly don't need the extra addition of twenty million. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
My name is Tony Strazulo, six zero nine East Louise Avenue. I'm here tonight because we're still talking about this jail. We have an election coming up next year, and there's two people that are running for sheriff. We already know the current sheriff disagrees with what you all have planned. Has any of you gone and asked the two people that are running for sheriff, would they, they're the ones that are going to be running this facility? And if you guys have it, I'm going to. I will, next week, I will go speak to both of them, and we'll get it out there on how they feel. Because the people should know who's going to be running this and how they feel, not just about wasting and spending money. I can tell you, in four months, I've been in that jail twice. Both of them are unlawful. It's corrupt. This justice system is corrupt from the bottom up. Both times I've been charged unlawfully, and both times I will follow through. There's people that are sitting in this room today that are high up. They don't know the rules. They don't know the Constitution. They don't respect their citizens. And neither do you. You all sit over here with this look on your face like you're doing something for us. Not one of you, I haven't heard not one of you do something for the public that hasn't happened in this room. You all show up, you sit in your seats, you vote yes, you listen to the person that tells you what to do, and that's what happens. Nobody has done any research here. None of you. It's ridiculous. Because if you did research, we wouldn't be sitting here in this spot right now having this discussion. We need to move forward, okay? We cannot afford this big jail. We cannot afford to staff this big jail. And when I need some time and I start my investigations, I can promise you there won't be that many people in jail. Because these officers are here, aren't just going to make these wild arrests like they had been. Because I've already got a list, and I'm already going to start looking at all the body cam footage, and this stuff is going to come out. You want people to move here, and you think people are going to come here and work and have these jobs and fill these positions? I promise you, by the time I'm done online, there will be nobody Googling Moorestown, Tennessee, or Hamlin County that's going to want to move here. I promised you that. That's from the school board, to the mayor, to everybody sitting here. This place is a joke. It's a joke. You all go home, y'all rest your heads on your pillow, and you forget about what's life, about all the people you're affecting. It's not about the people just sitting in this room. It's about our next generations of people. The people that we want to come here. Look outside. What's being built? Townhomes. Townhomes. You know why it's townhomes? Because that's the people we're bringing here, is the people that can't afford a single-family home. That's why we're building townhomes.
Good time. Thanks a lot for your comment. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Seeing nobody in, we're going to proceed on with, uh, our business at this time. Bobby Tom, the Education Committee, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item six A, Resolution twenty-one fifteen. It's a resolution of the County Legislative Body of Hamlin County, Tennessee, authorizing the construction of a new Lincoln Elementary School. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
James Stapp seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we're going to, uh, have the clerk to call the roll.
Jeff Baker?
Yes.
Chris Puttshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Aye.
Thomas Stowey?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Tom?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Ali Norman?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stapp?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
Yep.
Thirteen votes for the resolution. The resolution is passed. Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate that very much. At this time, we will recognize Chairman Randy DeBoer of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On seven eight, the approval of the monthly checks for July twenty twenty-one, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Bobby Tom, any discussion? Hearing that, all of those in favor of approving the monthly checks for July twenty twenty-one, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. The motion is approved.
Item seven B, Resolution twenty-one sixteen, Initial Bond Resolution, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed forty-two million, four hundred thousand, and no dollars. And this is a general obligation bonds of Hamlin County, Tennessee, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Tim, uh, Goins, second to the motion.
Question.
Mr. Neesmith has a question.
We're going to, uh, now that we've got a motion, a second, I'm going to ask if anybody has anything, any discussion. Mr. Neesmith.
We just passed the school bill for twenty-two million dollars to build our school. As Ms. Lloyd brought up a while ago, uh, that in this bill, it's twenty-four, in this bond, it's twenty, it's forty-two million, four hundred thousand dollars. My motion is, I make a motion to amend the Resolution twenty-one sixteen to change that not to exceed twenty-two million dollars, and to change the wording on the resolution so all of the twenty-two million dollars is solely for the school construction. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, uh, and your second. Thomas Stowey is second to the motion that, uh, we amend the original motion by deleting forty-two billion, four hundred thousand to twenty-two million, and that it be worded that all of it will be spent for the school system. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I've got some discussion.
Okay.
On my amendment. This twenty million, four hundred thousand dollars will not be spent till March of two thousand and twenty-three. We're not charged anything for these bonds till we take that money out and start spending. So we're not losing, we're not losing interest on it. We don't pay interest on it as long as it's just in there. And my thoughts are, we went over the plans. We've changed the plans. We've got, uh, architects looking at them. We've done qualifications for other construction people to bid on it. We won't be getting those bids in. The last word I heard was, uh, September the thirtieth. And I, I sent an email to, as you know, Mr. Shipley, I sent an email to Burwell and, and Mosley to find out if they had had any more changes to the jail. And the reason I did that, because if I don't do that, I never hear if there is any changes or not. Nobody on the jail study committee tells me if there's any changes. That's why I can do it, and I've got the right to go to those people. But I've heard nothing. Are there any more changes? I don't know. But all I do know is this, this is not going to cost us one thing. It's going to be a year, March the twenty-third, or March, March of two thousand twenty-three, before any of this money is spent. Wait till we get the bids. Wait till we see how much we're going to spend. If I had my wants, I would hope these bids would come in ten million dollars lower. But I don't know. I'm guessing. Architects can't tell us. Nobody can tell us what these things are going to do. So I said, let's wait till we find out what the price is going to be. Let's keep the horse in front of the wagon instead of getting the wagon out in front of the horse. And that's all I've got to say about it.
Okay, Mr. Har, uh, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to kind of echo Commissioner Neesmith, but also add a little bit. I would like to separate this for the sheer purpose of denoting who's voting for the schools and who's voting for the jails. That way we have it there. But like Mr. Neesmith said, the twenty million, four hundred thousand dollars is not going to be needed for an extended period of time. We don't need to add that right now. That's just putting it out there that opens the door for things. I've said for a long time, my opinion on building, if you tell somebody, build me what you can for eighty-five million, they're going to get the most they can get from you and give you the least. My opinion on things. I don't want us to have this extra twenty million for them to see as this is extra that we can pull from, we can pad. Again, that's my opinion on it, my opinion only, but I would like to see the rest of this body vote to separate that just so that we can have a defining line between the schools and the jail. Because we all know the confusion and the additional discussions that were made over the first time when we combined the West High with the jail money. If we separate that, then we've got a defining line, a separation, that we can show. So, Mr. Chairman.
Pros and cons of getting the money now, and it's not going to cost us anything. So what are the pros and cons to waiting until we actually need it? A year and a half from now, getting money?
Thank you. I was hoping to take over.
Chris Bassler, Cumberland Securities, Anacola, Tennessee. I serve as the county's municipal advisor. Just to back up a little bit, I want to go over what this resolution accomplishes and what this resolution does not accomplish. This resolution is, uh, when you, when the, when the county is going to enter into, uh, issue debt to finance capital and infrastructure projects, there are multiple steps that have to be taken, both from a state law standpoint and under, under securities regulations as well. This resolution is what's called the initial resolution. This satisfies a state law requirement that you have to put out there, your intent, that you are, you are planning to issue at some point, uh, debt to finance whatever you list in the projects here to, uh, in the project list. So here it's, you know, jail, education. So here it's jail, education facilities. What this does not do is obligate you to actually issue that debt. To do that, it requires another resolution. If you adopt this resolution right here tonight, you cannot, without further action, issue any more debt, period. Not even the sixty-five million that's still authorized under the prior initial resolution. Because what happened that last time, we, we did the first initial resolution, and then you did a bond resolution that was for twenty million dollars. That resolution, which is much thicker, is what obligates the county to actually be able to pay to issue debt and obligates the general obligation credit, the full faith and credit of the county. So this resolution right here is one that is for state, state law purposes, gets it out there, lets the public know you're considering debt issuance, and gives them an opportunity to petition it if they so choose to do so. After that is over, then you can come back, or you can, you can issue a bond resolution at the same time, you can do it concurrently. But you cannot issue debt unless you come back and consider it. So if the bids are coming in, in late September, then you're gonna have an idea of where that is, but the, the, you know, people submitting the bid, the contractors submitting the bid, aren't gonna have a not-to-exceed amount on that because you've not authorized anything.
I've got a question, Mr..
Wait a minute, Thomas. Let's wait until all the other commissions have an opportunity, then you can come back?
So what I hear you saying, if I'm correct, is if we don't pass this, it could hold up the processes?
No.
If you don't, if you don't pass, if you don't authorize this resolution,
Right.
and the bids come in higher than where you have already approved, that could be an issue down the road. If you approve this now, you still have to come back and approve a bond resolution later.
Correct.
You can't issue bonds, you can't issue anything unless you come back and do another bond resolution specifying.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other comments from any other commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Other than the, yes, okay.
I, I agree that the, the bonds need to be separate from, you know, the school bond money and the jail justice center bond money, because it, it tends to force some people into voting for something they don't wanna vote, you know, the whole, the whole part of it, the whole part of it, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm for the schools, always happy, and of course, everyone knows I'm not, I'm not pleased with the monstrosity of this jail, but, Justice Center, but that's how I feel.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir.
If, if these bonds were separated, is it potentially costing county more to issue two separate sets of bonds? If we had, in other words, you do one for the school, and we turn around and have to do one for whatever capital project it would be, that encourage more cost, isn't it?
Well, whenever you separate a bond issue out for various reasons, oftentimes it will come with an incremental extra cost. Sometimes it makes sense to do that, though. As it stands, the, the, the plan, as it stands for the jail, would be to do the bond issues in phases anyway, so you're not issuing more debt than what you actually plan to spend at that time. So it was gonna be a multi-year approach anyways.
And I, I understand that one, I was just speaking of what's on the board for not. If we were to separate those two, you're gonna have two separate bond issues that could incur more cost, is just a thought.
The resolution wouldn't impact whether you split it or keep them together.
The citizens would be re- generous with it from it being separated. That's all I can think of. Anybody else, before we jump back to Thomas? Thomas?
Yes, sir. The quick question is, you know, like you said, it's a very minimum cost, it's the advertising in the paper and our attorney's fees writing up the resolution. You know, it was said that the Tribune would reap the rewards. You know, I don't know state law, what is state law on publishing this? How many times do they have to publish it in, in the paper and such as that? Do you know that, sir?
Once the initial resolution is adopted, you would publish it one, one time. And then there's twenty days from the date of publication for protests to take place. From there, you still have to come back, and this legislative body still has to consider each, each issuance as it comes to.
I understand that, but if, if we separate this and we come back with another one next month, only thing we're doing is paying the Tribune one more time and the attorney to write the resolution to separate it and be with the jail on this own resolution. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we just split this, this resolution, just do, give it to the schools? After we get our bids, we're looking for twenty million, four hundred thousand, just let that lay there till we find out how much more money we gonna have to have, and how much more money the commission's gonna vote to spend on this jail. This thing could come in, twenty million could not, couldn't touch it. We don't know. It might be thirty million, it might be forty million, but it might be ten million. We don't know. Why not wait till we get the bids, they get the prices on it, and then try to do something? We won't be guessing at it that way, right now we're anticipating and we're guessing, is all we're doing.
Okay, we're gonna be voting, um, yes, mayor, excuse me.
Oh, boy.
Can you see that hand right there?
The, the whole purpose of, of the spreadsheet that's in your bag, that, that goes, goes through and, and gives you the, the financing plan for the elementary school and the additional money for the Justice Center, or actually for the whole Justice Center. This is, this is to establish a plan for how we would finance these projects. And the initial, this initial bond resolution at forty-two, four, like Mr. Bassler mentioned, doesn't, doesn't commit us to issuing those, those monies. This ninety-five million dollar number on the Justice Center is, if you take where that, where that number came from was you have ten million dollars in a design cost, land purchasing, a testing, F, F, and E, and then you had eighty-five million in bricks and mortar. Now, it doesn't go, it doesn't take into account the federal COVID money that we can apply to this project. So that could reduce it, but what this does is it sets a plan in place, it also sets a cap. It sets a maximum of what the county can issue in debt. It sets a maximum that would not exceed the eighty-five million plus the forty, which is the one twenty-seven for, for West High, the elementary school, and the Justice Center. It doesn't, doesn't commit you to anything except it's, except that it sets a cap on what you can, what you can borrow.
Just like the eighty-five million set a cap, yeah.
Do you all have a motion? This is, we're back to, now we're gonna be voting on the amendment to the motion, and this is the amendment.
Not to exceed twenty-two million. To amend the original resolution, not to exceed the twenty-two million.
And that twenty-two million would be spent on schools only. Okay, we're gonna call the rolls this time on just the amendment. You vote for it, for the amendment, you will say aye or yes. If you vote against it, you'll say no.
Jeff Baker?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
No.
Randy DeBoer?
No.
Thomas Stoddy?
Yes.
Tim Gouwens?
No.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
No.
Ali Nornwani?
No.
Mike Creed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
No.
Jim Stat?
No.
Taylor Ward?
No.
Okay, the amendment fails, if there are eight no's. Okay. The amendment fails, we're back to the original resolution. And I think you understand what the original resolution is. Forty-two million, four hundred thousand. And we're gonna do a roll call on the original motion. If you're in favor of the original motion, you will say yes. If you're against it, you will say no.
Jeff Baker?
I'm voting no, but it's because, well, that money's going to the Justice Center jail project. I am for the schools, I always have been, but that's, that's why it's no.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Stoddy?
Yes, but I'm a customer of one of the schools.
Tim Gouwens?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Ali Nornwani?
Yes.
Mike Creed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Dr. Perry, I'm gonna vote no, but you saw what I tried to do, get you twenty-two million, where you would handle it, you wouldn't have it mixed up with this Justice Center. You'd have your own deal. Could be used for nothing but the jail, I mean, the school, nothing but the jail. I vote no.
Okay.
Howard Shipley?
Uh, yes.
Jim Stat?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
No.
Three no's. Ten yes.
There's ten yeses, three no's, so the resolution is approved.
Item 7C, Communication System, put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
James Step seconds the motion. Any discussion about the communication system? Hearing that, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. The motion is approved.
Item 7D, Resolution 2117, Resolution to authorize cooperative purchase agreement for the use and benefit of all county departments, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Tim Gouwens seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose it, let it be known by saying no. The motion is approved.
Item 7E, Utility Audit Participation Agreement, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Tim Horner seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. The motion is approved.
Item 7F, Twenty Twenty Two Community Development Block Grant, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Chris Cutshaw seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing that, those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, let it be known by saying no. The motion is approved.
Item 7G, Restated Agreements for Accounting Services, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Tim Gouwens seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing that, those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. The motion is approved.
Item 7H, Conflict of Interest Change, put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Chris Shaw seconds the motion. Any discussion?
Would you like to write on that?
The change of the policy and procedure that we discussed in the last meeting.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. The motion is approved.
Item 7I, Budget Amendments, Fund One-O-One, Sheriff's Department for three thousand, four hundred dollars, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Baker seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. The motion is approved.
7I II, Fund One-O-One, Sheriff's Department for a hundred dollars, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Bobby Hahn seconds the motion. Any, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose the motion, let it be saying, by saying no. The motion is approved.
7I III, Fund One-O-One, County Clerk's Office for ten thousand dollars, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ali Nornwani seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose the motion, let it be known by saying no. The motion is approved.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Ford. And item number eight has been deleted, and we're now to public comments, general comments. And again, Ms. Lloyd has requested five minutes. Ms. Lloyd, you're recognized.
Mr. Shipley, I'd like to reserve my five minutes to the end.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anna Horner, fifteen thirty-five, Panther Creek Road. So you just keep plowing forward with this mess without a plan. If you're a commissioner standing in the gap for citizens, I hope you know this is not aimed at you, I appreciate you. The rest of you don't care if citizens don't want this. First, you appointed a bail bondsman to head up your jail committee. Once you build your Taj Mahal, you can be proud of how you built up his business for him. Real ethical of y'all, congrats. You started with a sixty-five to seventy-five million dollar deal, which was already too much. You refused to look at it any other way and told us we were misinformed. Then your bids came back super high, and you had to regroup. Now you're getting some more of our money to make up the difference. Taxpayers would damn. To beat it all, you refused to discuss staffing costs and how they would part the burdeness. You just play follow the leader. The problem is, your leaders have their own interests and legacies at heart, and apparently you have no issues with that as long as you are part of their circus. And by the way, you're still, you still need to sentence Jim Stat for bullying, infringing on First Amendment rights, and conduct extremely unbecoming of commissioner.
Thank you for your comments. Did we, do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Hi, my name is Trista Archer, fifteen oh two Allen Road. Mr. Horner, I'm very disappointed in you. I talked to you a month ago today about a sign in a neighbor's yard. Do you remember that conversation? Did you talk to Mr. Cutshaw about it, and did you return my phone call? No, you did not. You said you didn't know anything about it, and then you stopped by their house one day this week wanting to know why they were tearing down the porch. I understand why they had to tear it down, it wasn't grandfathered in and what happened with the planning commission, but you told those people you didn't know anything about it. You did know about it. You had talked to him, you had talked to me, and then you lied to them. You lied to me, and I don't appreciate it. And furthermore, where you live, at one time, my whole family owned all that land over there until I had greedy cousins and TBA cousins. And please, the next time you come up my road, there is a stop sign and there is a speed limit. Think about your children living on that road. Stop at the stop sign. I have to, so do you.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Bonnie Bullington, 317 St. Doublefield Street. I have a couple of things to touch on. First would be the lawsuit about our First Amendment rights being shut down in this meeting room. We got a response, Mr. Shipley, where you denied, that you denied us our First Amendment rights. So my question is, why did this body of commissioners censor you? And why did you sit up there and apologize if you didn't do it? And then you come out with this, it's not gonna fly. Then, I wanted to, Commissioner Stead, I still think he needs to be censored. Yes, I realize that we on this side do some things we probably shouldn't do. But do you think it might be because of what goes on that side? You need to take a good hard look at yourselves. The next thing I want to touch on is Rules Committee. Still no mention of another meeting. Why is that? Is it because you can't get a hold of Nancy Phillips? Maybe to get her to end the meeting? We asked that she be thrown off the committee because of the way she acted. That hasn't been done. You know, we don't see you guys doing anything except asking for more money for this Taj Mahal, yes, girl. Thank you to the commissioners up here tonight that tried to do the right thing. Sadly, you will never be able to because of the rest that wants to do what Mayor Britton wants. And how quick did King Bill Britton jump up here and make his point, knowing that you better vote his way? You know, y'all ran for office. You need to take a good hard look at yourselves. Supposedly, you ran for office to do what's right for us taxpayers. But there are you commissioners in here that are doing nothing but bankrupting Hammond County, and in the process, you're gonna bankrupt the taxpayers. If you get this other 20 million for the jail, that will be a net. It will be long until you'll be coming back for more money for this crazy jail. Do the right thing for once in your lives. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Here in Orville, 1501 Allen Road. I just wanted to say that it didn't seem like any of you realized that Mayor Bill Britton caught up. He gave you the same song and dance about, oh, this is just putting a cap on your debt. He gave you that same song and dance when you voted on the 85. Nothing limits you to go back and have resolutions for bond issues and all that stuff. But you sat there and listened to him, and he told you the exact same thing. I sat here and heard, and it was for the 85 million. The thing is, too, at what point, if you take the current debt, the 85 million, plus the additional 42, and add it all together, average it out to an even number, is you're looking at a total of 160 million dollars. Not including everyday expenses that our budget, yearly budget's supposed to take care of. At what point in time, if something happens down the road, 50, within 50, I don't know, I don't know when we can pay off or make a dent in 160 million dollars of debt. Something else happens, what are you gonna do? You're gonna tax, tax us to the point, I'm to the point. You keep taxing, it's not worth me having land and property in this county. I'll sell it and move. I'm tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? We have some announcements that I need to call during the.
Chairman Shipley, I reserved my five minutes, remember?
Oh, okay.
This is kind of a free form. Linda Noe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. You saw tonight exactly why Mayor Britton put those two bond situations together. He knew it would force, and it did, you to vote for 42-4 because you didn't dare, and I appreciate the ones who did dare to say, you're not gonna put me in that hole. And that's what's good about being able to say something when you vote. Because it's like in Washington, they vote for pork, put it all together. And that's what the old Britton had you do. And he put a lot of you in a bind. And it wouldn't have made a bit of difference in the world to separate those two. Yeah, you would have had to pay, Jack Fishman needs the money. I'll pay for it the second I had, if you would do that. But it was to separate and make it clear who is for what. But no, Bill jumps up because he could see, oh, no, gosh, it makes sense what Mr. Neesmith proposed. He's got a second, there's a lot of discussion. I better jump in and make sure that my group realizes they need to vote for the whole 42-4. And as Ms. Arwood said, this idea, oh, this caps it. Yeah, so did the one in January of 2020. Capt it? No. The other thing is, there's a, there are a lot of situations up here with this jail. I'm sure I won't get an answer, but I don't know how many of you know that someone died in that jail just about, I'm thinking two weeks ago. I know some of you were asked, and a lot of you didn't know that. You never get told anything. You just get told, we got lots of lawsuits. Hello, Mr. Katz? Wonderful, Mr. Katz didn't tell you that. He was willing to talk to you about the lawsuit against him, the double-dipping, double-billing lawsuit, which he had no right to talk to you about. But then he doesn't tell you the things that you did need to know, that are about the county. And I won't even go into Mr. Katz lying to the court in your lawsuit, Mr. Shipley. And now he wants to fix that, explain. All he had to do was tell the court, yes, I built the county, and it was wrong, and I'm going to return the money. Instead, he told the court, I didn't build the county. And then he ran out and tried to make it true by writing a check back. That was your lawsuit, Mr. Shipley. And I noticed in your last responses that Ms. Bullington was talking about, yeah, you were asked if you violated the First Amendment rights, and your attorney denied that. There's a disconnect there. I know he went through this explanation, oh, I just, you know, read that 14 paragraphs, and I just voted for to censure myself. You voted to censure yourself because of that. And then you deny violating the First Amendment rights. I think you need to explain that, or your attorney, that would be fine. What do we have up here? Does anybody know what's going on? Does anybody care? And why are we in this situation? Why are you talking about 95 million dollars for a jail? Not a fancy justice center. Why are you picking that solution instead of a 60 or 65 million dollar solution? Answer that. Run to the paper, give him a statement. Let's have a series of articles in the paper about why we need to spend 95 million when there's a 65 million dollar solution that's safer, requires less staff.
Your comments are up.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else who wishes to address the commission? Commissioners, please note of the announcements concerning the meeting in September. We stand adjourned.